My best.
Very good. Evening, everybody. I'd like to call together the town of McCandless, meeting of town council for February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, if all of you could join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Announcements first, how we conduct the meetings. As we all know, we will work together to better our town. We all have equal voice. We may disagree, but we will do so with civility and respect because in the end, we are all neighbors. First order of business is because we have a new council member, we're going to shift around a few liaison assignments. For those that are up here. Because we only have thirteen of them. It's hard to keep track. So we did a little spreadsheet for everybody. And I'll, I'll tell everybody what the, what can you say, what the change. Okay, it's a little confusing, but you look at the chart that I sent. Hopefully it'll make some sort of sense. Uh, council member Singer, we're going to remove uh you from the firefighters committee and add you to the planning commission as a liaison. We're going to remove your planning alternate liaisons from planning and MIDA and add you to the uh MFPA. Uh, Ms. Clunin, uh, we're going to remove you from the heritage liaison and add you to the MFPA. Your alternate liaisons will remove the MFPA, remove um from the chamber. Uh, add the EAC to an alternate liaison position, add the MIDA. Uh, and then Mary Anne, uh, you are going to be added to the firefighters liaison and the heritage liaison. Uh, and your alternate, alternate liaison position will be the, the planning commission. So everything is on the chart in front of you. Take a minute to mull it over. If what we did is we tried to uh, play to Mary Anne's strengths and to the others on council uh to, to move them or move them around. So um, if there's any questions or concern, because maybe there's a meeting time that doesn't work for you or something, please after the meeting, grab me and we can, we can figure something out. Is there any big picture questions? I can't remember what we talked about last time, but this took Brian like.
A bunch of moves. From what we had to adjust, that's kind of how we were getting through this year was just it'll limit the amount of moves.
Yeah, so or yeah, so there's not new um introductions and stuff. But absolutely, if it's an issue, you know, because of timing or something, we could, we can, uh, we can chat after the meeting and we can, we can move something.
Not, I often sit in on activities as well, so.
Do you? Because I just know that I'm not going to be able to do that much. There. Only because I'm taking care of my mother now.
I'm happy to help with that, too. Yeah, yeah.
The ultimate in my mind is more important just that when we have to pick forward people, you know.
I don't, I just, I just know that.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's not, would not be that. As an alternate, I doubt you'd feel any time pressure with that position.
Alright, because I've got library and.
Yeah. We'll look at it if, if we need to make time accommodations for time commitments.
Okay.
We can certainly do that for you, so you know, so you can take care of your family. Okay. Um, next up, I have wording here, so bear with me. Uh, so the twenty twenty-three banner community status update. So the Allegheny League of Municipalities, which we are members of, uh, in conjunction with Allegheny County and, and the program sponsors recently announced their twenty twenty-three banner communities. Uh, this honors municipalities and authorities that distinguish themselves as model communities to their commitment to sustainable practices, including professional development intergovernmental governmental cooperation, sound fiscal management, proactive communication to engage stakeholders. As a result of our commitment to transparency and accountability, these communities have achieved banner community status in twenty twenty-three, and McCandless is, I'm happy to say, is one of those. Um, I know we've wanted, as long as I've been on council, and I know it's even been longer than that, so.
As long as I've been here.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. So it, it's, it's a, it's a testament to uh, the work that we, maybe the, the guidance we give from up here, but more importantly, the men and women that are employed here in our police, our road crews and our town administration. So, thank you, gentlemen. Thank, if you can tell everybody, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, thank you to the amazing people that, that make this place go every day from our police department, our public works, um, all the, the volunteers that are on our committees, you know, everyone that has a piece of making this place the, the place that it is. So uh, that is, that is why we are eligible and why we qualify in our name to banner community.
You're accurate. Yep, and we'll get an actual award at our, at our conference center, I think, early April. Yeah, all good stuffs there. And then another announcement wasn't on the agenda. Uh, on the sixteenth, from four to eight, we have our Souda, which is our zoning rewrite. There's an open house. Uh, it's here. I take it in the, in the council chambers for anybody that wants to pop by and add their two cents to uh, to that uh almost year-long uh project.
Yeah, it's it, the, the Souda stands for the subdivision of land development ordinance, which is a piece of zoning. And uh, we've been working on a, a long process with public input, our planning commission to rewrite our subdivision land development ordinance along with their zoning.
Then, next up, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to make a public comment on any of the agenda items? So, please come to the podium, tell us your name and address. And if you're online, which write your name and address in the chat box and Sandra will send you a microphone. Seeing none in the audience, not any online? Okay, moving on. Okay, the meeting minutes from our January twenty-third meeting were included in everyone's package. Did anybody have any uh, uh, any edits they'd like to make that? Okay, seeing none, uh, the floor is open for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve of minutes from last meeting.
Seconds.
Thank you. Second, Ms. Clunin, uh, everyone in favor of the meeting minutes signify by saying aye.
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 The opposed? Yeah. Minutes approved. Uh, now the reports of our committees, uh, Dr. Roppa, can you run us through the public safety committee report?
Yes, thank you. Uh, first is the chief's report. Uh, chief, would you like to come up and add anything other than what was in your report?
Real quick. Good evening, everybody. Uh, I wanted to start off by saying in January, we said farewell to our longtime administrative assistant. Uh, Denise Marotta was down there for twenty-two years and change. She retired in January and we wish her well in retirement. Also in January, uh, we turned over over sixty pounds of unwanted prescription medication. We participate in that drug takeback initiative. Uh, folks in the community can drop off unwanted prescriptions downtown or downtown downstairs of the police department, uh, business hours. Um, also in January, uh, we do, all through the school year, we participated in our Bigs and Blue program. We'll continue to do that through the end of the school year. That's where several officers are matched up with littles. We call them elementary students. Uh, kind of mentoring through big brothers, big sisters. I think I've mentioned it before. Uh, also in January, all officers began their mandatory two-day uh training through the MP O E T C, which every year officers have to complete two full days of training in addition to all the other trainings we find for them. Any questions on the monthly report other than that?
I have a question, please. Um, the, our mental health interns. Um, curious how, how they've been working and serving our community and things like that.
So we continue to find different ways to get, there's actually one now, one moved on from police social work, ma'am. Uh, several months ago, Taylor, there was, there, she decided police social work maybe wasn't uh in her best. So yeah, so good, good, good to learn it quick and she moved on. We still have Victoria Spring down there. Uh, she has a full-time job on top of being a master's degree student and, and balancing that with the social work internship. Uh, we continue to find different ways to, to get her involved. You know, um, the mental health aspect is what we all probably think about. What, you know, uh, the officers and I are trying to work out is where else can maybe we use her, maybe a hoarding situation or an elderly person that maybe needs some services. So we continue to try to develop that program, and I think that it's making some strides. I think she would like to come maybe at some point when it makes sense for you folks. Uh, I can work with Brian and maybe if you guys want to talk to her in a public forum or otherwise. Um, I'm sure she'll be happy to as she gets closer to the end of her school year and her internship.
Great, thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Um, Officer Madden and Ken, I enjoy retired at the beginning of, the end of last year, beginning of this year. And I'm curious if we have a timeline, any kind of thought planning going forward.
So I've had conversations, Mr. Singer, with the shallow creek kennels where we got Joy.
Yep.
They just need the, uh, the go-ahead for us.
Okay.
Uh, I know we've talked about, I've talked with community members about fundraising efforts. Um, I know that Mr. O'Malley and I've talked about potential ideas on how to fundraise. Um, if that's needed in order for the dog and the handler uh to, you know, with shallow creek kennels just needs the town to give the blessing and they can uh select a, a pooch that makes sense. And uh, we have a ha, uh, we have somebody interested down there that would like to be the handler.
Okay.
So it's probably just a matter of us deciding when, when the town wants to uh make that financial step.
Okay, do you have any recommendations? Do you think we're ready for it now? We have a handler that I'm lined up.
Yeah.
You just need counsel to give you a go-ahead.
Bingo. Yes, sir.
What I wanted to know.
Yep, thank you.
What is the cost?
Uh, the estimate that I have down there, Mr. Toro, is about sixteen thousand dollars. That covers the dog and the, the training for the handler end all. Now, I haven't touched base recently, so it might went up a bit.
Yeah, there's some other costs that are. And why do we talk about some community fundraising, but um, not something we aren't ready to do. I think we're trying to figure out the logistics to make it work.
There, there's, there's more to it than just the sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
Just, there's some other things that go along with that.
What kind of dog do you want to get? A bomb or a?
I mean, all kinds. Joy was a uh person in all of search dog as well as an apprehension. I think that that probably makes the most sense here, but we could have discussions about it. If, if you folks don't like the apprehension aspect, then you might look at a different breed.
Well, isn't that the most dangerous thing you guys do is go to um, you know, domestic disputes and.
Yeah, it, it would be nice to have that ability if you need it. Absolutely.
Well, it's my big, that's my big one.
If you had the luxury of a second one, then you could talk about it, the bomb sniffing one or a therapeutic animal. But I think your first and foremost need is that one that can apprehend if they need to.
Right.
Thank you, Chief. Is that all right? Is everyone in acceptance if we ask Ryan to take this to the next step? We'll come back with a more formal plan. I mean, it sounds like it's up here, just put it on writing.
Yeah.
We have, we have the vehicle and everything, so.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, that's pretty, yeah.
Still equipped, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to see a, we can, we have a vehicle to go and everybody's ready.
Yeah.
Let's get the ball rolling.
Absolutely, whatever you folks need from me, we'll do it.
Yep, just put it down and writing on a plan and we'll, we'll give you the, yes.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Officer of the year now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So as you folks know, can I go into it now?
Yes.
Uh, Albert Devlin, uh, Memorial Officer of the Year Award. Uh, we were involved in other projects and a changing of the guard, so to speak, last year, so I never got to make the announcement. So a belated officer of the year for twenty twenty-one um, would be Officer Carl Wianey. A couple reasons given by his peers, uh, if I may. Uh, Officer Wianey is thorough in his follow-ups and in his investigations. He exhausts every lead and he sees his case through to the rightful conclusion. He's a reliable officer that always displays a positive attitude. He's a self-motivated team player. Officer Wianey volunteered to become uh the North Allegheny High School SRO, which is School Resource Officer at the beginning of this school year, which transcends the year he won the award, but it just shows his dedication to, I think, to the community and the school district. Um, he's about a half way through this first school year, and I'm already getting positive reviews from the staff up at North Allegheny Senior High School. So twenty twenty-one is Officer Carl Wianey. Well, listen, there are officers of the year back there, folks, just so we all. Officer Year of the Year twenty twenty-two. Uh, Michael Cavalier. There's Mike right there with the bearded fella. Uh, some of his peers said that Officer Cavalier is very thorough in his follow-ups and he's skillful in his investigations. He sees his cases through to their proper conclusion. Officer Cavalier handles his business professionally and courteously. He promotes a positive image of the McCandless Police Department to the community. He always accepts all duties and assignments without question. Officer Cavalier is also a field training officer, and he's currently training our newest member, Officer Patrick Jennings, who you folks hired a couple of months ago back there in the back. Uh, so Officer of the Year twenty twenty-two is Michael Cavalier. They both got Officer of the Year pins and their names will go on the plaque downstairs. In fact, they're already on the plaque.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Do we have a picture of them to put out on our web?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, we get it now?
Yeah. We'll get it right now.
Can you get them from the floor?
Maybe in front of the flags up here with the council.
You're up here?
Yep.
In front of the, I mean.
Everybody can get in.
Come all the way up.
You want to send it?
Yeah, or kind of by the flags back here.
Yeah, you guys are in the middle. Yeah. Yes. All right, you ready?
Yeah.
All right, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Back to work.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you for your service, all you gentlemen. Thank you. Um, excuse me, the fire marshals report. To Jeff, see Jeff, Mr. Uh, chief, how about you?
Good evening, everybody. Um, have all my reports and hopefully you got my year-end report for twenty twenty-two. Um, the only thing I do want to remind council is um the upcoming G four oh two class. The uh overview of the instant command system for senior officials. Uh, the, the next class is February twenty-second to two-hour online class. Uh, if you haven't already taken the ICS one hundred and seven hundred, which is a lot more involved and there's a test at the end. Um, this class will satisfy your requirements. So I know, Marlin, you're new here, so I don't know if you have the ICS training or not, but I can get that for you. So if you missed February, there will be another one in September. Um, so one of our goals this year is not just for employees, but to try to get all of the town um, up to our training standards at where we need to be. So just that, that's all I got.
Question on that. Can that be made on demand or do we have to tune in live?
For the four oh two class?
Yeah.
So that's just, um, I think it might be through teams. I don't think it's, it's noon, but um uh, I did send an email out with the links and all that, because you have to create your federal um ID to call it a CID ID, and that you'll have forever. Uh, yeah, and that's how they track everything. So um what I can do is if you're still interested in doing that, if you don't have this uh PMSID, I know I uh recently emailed Brian, all that, just so he had it. Um, I can re-mail everybody and I can include Mary Ellen on it as well.
Mary Ann.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary Ann.
It's okay.
Sorry, um. And then, like I said, if you guys have time to take the February, if not, like I said, there will be another one in September, so.
If you've already had all that training before.
You're good.
I'm okay?
Yeah, if you've had the one hundred and seven hundred. Plus the search. You are good.
Okay.
Yep.
So I don't have to go back for it. Okay.
I have another question on a different subject. Um, you know, we're moving, the next thing on our agenda is building permits. And one thing I noted, uh, just in January alone, nine out of the twenty-four permit requests were for solar panels in our town.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know, it was, you know, one of the local news stations hyping up a danger to um the firefighters responding to homes that have the solar panels and the battery, the stations that are associated with them. Um, is there something, is that a concern of our, of our volunteer companies? Or is that something that part of this permit process would also be notifying the three departments?
So anytime we get a permit, uh, and I started this early last year when I came on was um, we have basically, we keep an Excel spreadsheet of any property that has solar panels in McCandless. And then what I do is uh, as Melinda gets those from the building department side, I've asked her to keep me um, abreast of what's going on and get that current list. And then what I do is I forward that copy out to all the volunteer fire chiefs so that they know where it's at. Uh, from there, um, they normally will uh notify our county dispatch. And then they'll actually fill out a hazard form so that if it comes up for a particular address and there's um a hazard flag, the dispatcher is supposed to read it and notify them uh as to, you know, what the hazard is.
Okay.
And I did hear one recently, they actually surprisingly
Bad.
Um, actually said, hey, be advised, there's solar panels on the roof. So, yeah, so that's, that's a big thing for me, too.
Just to piggyback on that, will we be able to take your Excel data and put it in our tracer, whatever we're calling that program, our tracer program, your pre-plan? Now we.
So that, I would, I would think so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, building permits for the month, yes. RJ is not here. It's in your packet.
I could answer any questions if you had them.
I think I guess just to clarify, so we're going to go with our interim building inspector, third party for a time, just see how it goes, and then we'll make, you'll, you'll come to us and make a decision on whether to go that route or.
Yep, so, yeah, I want to see how it's working and see what are our best options.
Okay, just wanted to let everybody know that we've had a conversation. Okay.
Oh, that was a good conversation. Okay. Code enforcement for the month. There's also reporting here, code enforcement. Um, I don't see RJ, RJ, are you online?
No, nope, but I can answer those questions.
Any questions with code?
I do. Uh, I think the new reporting system gives us a lot less information than we had in the past.
Okay.
You know, it, it really doesn't show any addresses and it says Duncan Avenue and da, 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 da.
Okay.
I'd like to see that a little bit more specifically.
Should be an adjustment on the, the way they were fourth grade and so we can make that.
I, I concur with that. I felt the same way.
Okay.
And there was a number on there that I know that I had personally called in because I had gotten complaints that aren't on that list, so it's not all inclusive or maybe the dates didn't line up.
Gotcha. Remember, we went through this before, until their formal complaints. We have to be careful releasing the information of the personal individuals. Remember, we talked about this. I think our reports, we were going to add the addresses, but not on the one publicly made or something.
That's fine by me.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I remember that in a previous meeting, there was an issue with that.
Okay.
But I have a discussion with, with RJ and Alex and see what we can and can't do, and we'll get that information to everybody.
Because it was a lot easier for us to be able to go to the addresses.
Just for follow-up, yeah, on our complaints. Yeah, I agree.
Any other questions? Hey, um, going on the liaison reports. Personal board, uh, Ms. Swiger.
She's not as intended.
Not a tennis today. And they're also a copy of the minutes in the report.
Yeah, the report's still in there.
Was that it?
It's.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Casey. Volunteer Fire Committee, Mr. Singer?
Uh, so we had a meeting, this is a quarterly um committee, it meets once a quarter. Um, topics include everything from, there's a new pre-planning uh part of our software update, uh, the fire marshal. And what we'll be providing is basically when uh the units, the companies show up to a fire thing, they'll be able to pull up pre-plans. Basically with information about the building structure, so that was, you hear me ask about the
Tracer.
Tracer with the solar panels, they'll be able to pop that up in our own in-house system. Um, the town, Jeff, and the fire departments are all working, getting a great dad. Just bringing us more up to speed, it makes them more efficient. Um, one of the next big things is in about two weeks, we have a uh kickoff for a basically, what do we want to describe it as a?
It's a strategic plan.
Strategic plan for the fire departments.
For the town of McCandless and the three volunteer fire departments.
So, you know, keep in mind, they are three independent organizations, you know, with town contributions for support. So we're, the town's required to provide fire protection and we choose to contribute to the three independent companies to provide that. Um, it was a pretty good meeting. We're, we're dealing with those. We're talking about some Westview Water. There's a specific type of connection on fire hydrants that hoses from our departments connect to. And we're having a little bit of a back and forth with Westview Water. Westview Water provides a certain type. Most fire companies use a different type and there's an adapter. And we're trying to work with Westview Water to, you know, are we allowed to put our adapter on all of yours so that it's a meter connection? And one thing I'm also talking with our town manager about is maybe on the private hydrants, ones that Westview Water doesn't have a say on, is maybe council can get together and do a little bit of an ordinance or say and saying, if you have a private hydrant, we want this type of connection automatically. Because it's what fits our service.
Right.
Um, so we worked through that. Uh, one of the other things, if you recall in December, you know, the fire departments came at us late and requested, you know, can you help us with our fuels? And it was late in the budget, there was a lot to change. Um, but they do want me to bring it back to council, you know, they are volunteers, they appreciate extra contributions. And they, they piggyback that on, their call volume has doubled over the last five years. So when they were responding about five years ago to three hundred and fifty calls, this last year, they've responded to seven hundred. I posed the question, why? Why all of a sudden are we seeing such a large increase of call volume? Development, they're seeing, it's not necessarily that our population's boom, but our commercial establishments have. We have more restaurants now, we have more places, there's more traffic. So there are more car accidents, things of that effect. We are seeing more false alarms, which we're working with Mr. Wisner to chase this more, but we went from Passan Hospital to, you know, an A H N quick hospital has some many high-rise senior living facilities with a lot more things of that. So they're seeing an increased call volume in that. They're trying to build every false alarm they can and do that, but they are seeing almost double the amount in the last five years. It's been an exponential increase. Um, I said I would bring those concerns back to council and, you know, this is, we're nowhere near the budget process. They just want you to keep that in mind going forward.
I have a question for the managers. When we find people for false alarms and what have you, and for fire pits and whatever, does that money go to our general coffers or does that go to the fire companies?
Uh, I would believe it would come back to here, that's an ordinance violation of the town of McCandless.
Could we tunnel that into the?
I'm going to go to the apparatus fund or part of it does.
It might, I, I honestly don't know. I don't know. Do you know anymore about that, Jeff, or?
Don't quote me, but I believe that false alarms somehow or another from the
The same.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
I know Trish is a but I believe that.
Yeah, that was my understanding of it as well. So I'm going to clear answer to that question.
Good, thank you.
Just to clarify, we also provide the fire departments an apparatus fund, basically a no interest loan that they can come to us bank to buy only their large trucks. So we do provide that for them and the violations of our fire alarms help to do in that, there's interest collected and they continue on your bills. So that's my report.
Got a question, Mr. Singer. So we have three great independent fire departments, they're acting as three silos or three separate organizations.
Yes.
And if they get in a room to do a steering committee, who's in the room to ask them questions like, why do you need three of those? Why do you need three of these? Why can't you do that as one?
Sure.
Who, who asks?
Who would, who would ask those questions? That's kind of what we're going to see out of this, you know, comprehensive, I'm calling.
We, we, we have a strategic plan.
I hired a consultant that is coming in to
To ask those questions.
Ask those questions.
Yes, it um you know, volunteer firefighters are volunteers, they're very passionate about their work.
Yeah, my dad's white ball.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't ask those questions. I'm saying that you know, done by professionals, done, and that's part of the strategic plan. They hired a consultant who in this industry to understand that. So this is the first step to ask you questions. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other question? That concludes my report.
Are there any public comments on any of the reports? Anyone online? Anyone online? No, no. Okay, that goes to the reports of facilities, Mr. Singer.
Uh, yeah, so facilities, uh, first part here is Sapperport Public Works. Jeff, do you have anything to give us here?
Yes. I just, uh, wanted to go over the paving program list that you all have in your packets. We did shave a, like two or, two or three streets due to, uh, utility work. Um, scheduled for two thousand twenty-three. Even though we have a twenty-year list for roads, uh, we still look at every road on the schedule, grade it from. One to five and, uh. Make sure those roads, uh, the worst ones are definitely on the list. This year, we're fortunate enough to have just about all of them on there. I would like to, if you guys both want to approve this list, I will get it out, uh, we wanna get this out. Right around the twentieth of February. Uh, it'll be posted in the Post Gazette or. I don't know what we're doing now, but, uh, the twenty-first and. You got the twenty-first and twenty-second and then March first, March second for the, uh, newspaper ads. I would like to, um, get this out as soon as possible. The deadline for bids will be March twenty-nine. And I would like to get it awarded immediately after that. So if they wanna start in May, they can. Uh, other than that, the air conditioning, HVAC and the window bids. Um, will be given for you, for you folks to review for the next council meeting to approve. Uh, the amounts and that if we wanna send them out to bid. So that's all I have.
And, and just, just.
Yes, ma'am.
I know we're including wiring for any technology, once we remove the roof for the HVAC.
So to shave some of the cost. We're not going to be replacing the ceiling, just a few of the tiles, grid work. We are going to use, uh. Some of the existing ductwork, uh, stuff like that. As far as pulling EMT or something up in the ceiling for. Cat six or whatever, we, we can do that. It's not a, I mean, the ceilings will be open. The place will be, uh, under construction, so yeah, we wanna do that.
Did approve that.
Without, the, the original plan was to change a lot of the actual ductwork. And this is a limited, the, the, the change in the expectation of what we're bidding, won't have like the full ceiling ripped open.
Right, but we did bid for wiring since we're gonna be up there and some of this.
Yeah, we, we can certainly do that. We can pull, uh, conduit and, and pull to a couple wire boxes in the ceiling. Even if it's for future use, sure. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to liaison reports, the environmental advisory committee, Mr. Casey.
Well, the reports are in your packet, but there are a few notable things I'd like to. Call out. One is that the deer management this year, we called sixty-four deer, which is over three times what we had last year. So that's a nice improvement. The Get Solar Initiative brought in three applicants from businesses in the town. And. The April, April fifteenth and April twenty-second will be the first two town cleanups, litter cleanups. And it's really hard to get people to show up. So any way you can. Get the word out, it would be greatly appreciated. Now, some of us will be over at the convention with Seven Springs. But tha- that's the fifteenth, the twenty-second, I plan on being there. So if any of you council people can show up, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Has the EAC approached the, the school or like, um, I know my daughter in particular. National Honor Society, they have to do so many hours of volunteer work. And very often they're, they're desperate to find these hours. Um, because some of the, you know, the cushy, your jobs fill up very quickly. Um, Mr. Tengowski, I forget how to spell it, I can find that out for you, but. If he is, wa- is willing to approve it upfront, the, I, I actually know the current president of the NHS.
Okay.
Could put it on their website and have, we would just need someone from the town or the AC to stand there with a clipboard and have these individuals sign it.
Well, Matt Hartman on our committee is responsible for that. So if I can hook you up with Matt, maybe we could get something.
Cause I know we're getting to the end of their, their timeframe that they need to have these hours in.
And we need the hours, so it's a great fit, thank you. I'll be in touch.
Can we extend that to the private schools too?
Sure.
Make sure John puts it on the website.
Yeah, John will create, uh, two Facebook accounts for that here in the next week or so. Um, trying to get it out there a little bit beforehand, try to get a little more attention to it.
That's all I have for the environmental committee.
Uh, next up, the technology committee, Mr. Rob.
They, they have, um, you have minutes in your packet. Uh, not too much going on there with the exception of, and correct me if I'm wrong, um. Mr. Malik, uh, we do have our body cams now and they're all supposed to be ready to go, we're gonna be rolling them out the next week or so.
I, I wouldn't say next week or so, there's, uh, still, so the, the actual hardware is here. They're working on the, uh, making sure that the server that takes all that video along is working. And also the, uh, the, all the, there's equipment that needs to go into each car to make them all talk to each other. Um, so Ryan and his team is working through that right now. Uh, there's also some training that the officers need to do before we roll that out. Um, so I don't wanna give it a, in a week or two, like it's still a little bit of a process to make sure we're ready to go, cause once you're ready to go, it's on. Um, full time.
I thought we were gonna roll out sooner than that. Okay. Um, also, you wanna talk about the grant for the traffic signal?
Uh, just to highlight that we received, uh, four hundred and. I wanna say. Four fifty-one, four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to improve, uh, twenty-one. Traffic signals in, um, the town, um, it's, uh, it's a huge improvement and ability to do something without, uh, pulling from our local tax revenue. So, uh, it's, it's very helpful, very. Much something we need to take care of on a regular basis. So this gives us a nice jumpstart on our regular program of taking care of our traffic signals. Uh, that we're required to take care of in the, in our town.
Thank you for the update, also the grant. Not too much to say about the website, I know that they're still working on that. Um, and as things. Start moving around a little bit more, then we can come back and give you a better idea of when that will launch. Uh, as far as the software, the new software, I think we're still on a, a hold for that because of the, the accounting package part.
There's, uh, we have to figure out what the tax module is gonna be before we come back to the financial software.
Other than that, is there anything else that I missed?
I'd like to make a comment, if you don't mind. We've taken over a year since I've been here to get the body cams. And. Now we have in this budget to buy defibrillators. You don't really get a second chance to show up and save somebody's life. We had three hundred and sixteen police assisted calls to ambulances. If the police get there first and they can get the AED, get the defibrillator going, the ambulance can fit that right into their product. So they don't even have to re, reposition them.
Right.
So. I, I really appreciate the town trying to save us money and finding grants, but. I understand from our meeting when we discussed this initially, when we put it in the budget, that these AEDs were expired. So not only do we run the risk of not saving someone's life, but we run the risk of putting the town in harm's way. With legal problems.
I, I don't believe they're expired, the ones that still work, work, it's just that they're getting harder to take care of.
Well.
And so like I, Ryan, I don't know if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the biggest problem is replacing batteries as they go.
Right, so the current state, uh, we might have one in about every other car right now, but they're easily ten, fifteen years old, they're. Almost double their shelf life. So they're, they're still, if they shock someone, they still will. But their batteries are dying, the batteries are kind of expensive and, uh, the new ones we're looking at, and I think I've talked to Mr. Casey about this. Would be plug and play with the medics, if we can get them, you know, they're gonna be the same that the medics have where Miles, who's the first one seen, they strap them on to person. When the medics come and take over, they can unplug our cords, plug them into their AED and go to the hospital.
Did we not just purchase like three?
I believe we port- purchased five.
Five?
Five.
New ones.
Yeah, we had asked for fourteen, I thought, in the budget.
Yeah, we expected them all in place this year.
But at times of the essence, you don't get a second chance to save a life, we put it in the budget. What's the likelihood of us being able to find a grant for this?
Uh, I mean, we've been successful in some of them.
But I, I see we've been successful with the body cams and it's over a year.
Well, that's back order, you can't, you can't really get, I mean, you can't really argue that, we couldn't get them, I mean, we, we ordered them, couldn't get them.
Yeah, the body.
So when they finally got here, now we can take care of doing the matching up to the cars and matching up, so it's different, everything we talking to each other.
How much are we talking are these AEDs?
Four thousand to five thousand a piece.
AEDs, uh, probably two, twenty-five hundred a piece.
So we're talking thirty grand here.
Right.
That we budgeted already.
Yeah, can we just get it done?
Yeah, I, I don't understand why we take forever to get anything done around here. I appreciate the fact that town wants to be favorable. But this isn't playground equipment. This is, you know, you show up and someone's laying there on the ground and you save their life.
Yeah, I, I would, I would continue Jack's sentiment of, of let's get this in the cars. I can't value, I can't value someone's life, if I, I can't sit there and say we didn't spend thirty grand if somebody's gonna pass.
Yeah.
No.
No one's life.
No one's life's worth that much, that little, sorry.
Just real quick.
Please.
Include you and all folks, uh, there's a wait kind of five or six months over time.
And that's why I wanna get out, cause if we wait another, for the grant, this might not be for two years. I'd rather see it happen sooner than later.
And we're working the kinks out of the body one camera program, nobody wants them on the street more than me.
Thank you.
The follow-up on another question, where are we on? I'm confused on where we are in the software. We.
We checked, we've chosen a software.
There's two, there's a finance side and a organization.
Right, and the finance part isn't worked out yet.
Is the organizational one done? We bought it, it's.
No, we didn't buy it yet, we're just, it's the one we've chosen, but until we can find out if this, uh. Uh, uh, accounting part is gonna work with how we want it to work, but I wanna purchase it yet. We don't, we don't, we make recommendations, we don't tell them what to do, they have the final say.
We purchased tracer.
Okay.
It's still being implemented because it's multiple factions. Planning code. So we're down that.
I thought you meant.
The next right now, we're trying to figure out is the tax collector piece.
Okay.
And if. What we think our options are gonna be, that's gonna come back.
That was like Springbrook or something.
Finance piece.
Yes.
So we had an option there, but what became more important is the tax collector software, because one of the pieces that does the business privilege tax. We don't know how long that's gonna last, we're trying to make that one.
Okay.
That talks back to Springbrook.
Okay.
Accufounder, the other companies that are out there.
Okay, so we're not set even on Springbrook yet, that could change.
But that's technically who we're working with.
What's our timeline? Because I just, there's obviously a timeline with finance to implement that, when tax season comes, I'm assuming you don't wanna implement that. Are we pushing past the point of, if we don't get it in the next two months, are we another year? Is it, it's same, could piggybacking off here, I don't wanna see this software be.
My understanding, my understanding was it was gonna be for next year, it wasn't gonna.
So we're already, cause this started last.
Unfortunately, it didn't go as smoothly as we had anticipated.
I mean, it's just a, a, a capacity thing, to try to change every single software in the town at once.
There's a lot.
There's a lot, and so we're just piecemealing what we can, when, when we can make it happen. It's not about affordability, it's about. Staff capacity to.
Okay.
And is it a match for what we want?
Is there, I just wanna make sure I can write down a piece of paper I can reference in twelve months that says, we didn't miss it again. So when's our drop dead date to pick? I mean, has technology committee told us when we should implement this and they put that kinda recommendation?
I'll get your, your answer, cause I don't have all of them right now, I know I have versions of this.
Understand my concern in coming out of tech is, cause I thought they made recommendations, that's why we have a tech committee.
They did, and then, and then it was postponed because the accounting piece, the tax piece. Wasn't able to work the way they wanted it to work.
Okay.
So. Trish and I forget who else was working on that to see what was what was working with Springbrook and, uh. That was the last town council meeting we talked about, and since then I wasn't at the last meeting, but they didn't, they didn't even bring it up at that meeting.
There, there wasn't any proposal to bring to them at that point.
Working with Trish over the last year, I know there's only a small window. Where she's gonna have the time and her staff is gonna have the time to implement it, so.
Yeah, you don't wanna mess with it in the夏季, you don't wanna mess with it during out of season, so there is a small window, no doubt.
You know, we're gonna put it in your capable hands.
Yep. Yeah, we'll, we'll get there, I mean, I, I think.
It, it will be.
It's been a, a, a heavy lift with changes and we're gonna get there.
Yeah, the recommendation was definitely to get it done for the spring. What was the glitch with the tax part that didn't happen?
I don't think it's with the technology committee anymore, I think it's more with the users.
That's exact, well, the users and, and, uh, the software company.
One more, sorry, I've got to here tonight. Uh, your, the minute notes talked about the traffic cameras.
Yes.
And it noted that, you know, as of this meeting, there wasn't a final answer, but by today's meeting, there should have been. I was curious if town manager had heard anything, the way I read the minutes was they were supposed to be a big thing at the end of January about. Where everybody else were going with these cameras, and I'm curious if we heard anything.
Anything from Zappala's on.
That's it.
Yeah, I, I believe that the chief received an update today, that he emailed me, I can't say the. That I got all the details. It is the, the software, yeah. The, the software that I know of was, um. You know, there's, there's a cost upfront and then maybe a subscription fee where one of the options would have been probably best for us, only cause we haven't invested in them yet. Uh, was just gonna be a subscription fee.
Yeah. So from what I know, uh, so far, the district attorney's office and the, uh, Allegheny County Chiefs of Police are recommending plate smart technologies. They are at the software end of it. Once the hardware's in, they come in and tie their plate capture technology into it and make it work. What we've been waiting for up till, and I don't know that we have a full list yet. I have one name of a vendor that they appear to be recommending that's doing a lot of the work right now, based out of New Ken. And their name. Secure Technical Solution. There it is, thank you. Uh, so I just spoke with that gentleman this evening and just said. If I give you some intersections, can you give me some quotes? He said, absolutely, you get me. So it's, at least it's a starting point. I see this name, that this company's name and email, so I think that, uh, that's at least to start. If there's, if there's a larger list that, to come, um, by all means, we'll, you know, take a look at them, but this is a good starting point.
We're starting to get some information, some numbers back. Do you think you could actually, when you talk to them, ask about implementability timeframes? I'm curious if again, this will happen within.
I'll say it will.
Or if it's next year's kinda thing.
Absolutely, I'll, I'll follow up and ask him once.
We have made in America.
And, and it, you know, that's gonna be a big thing, because this is the only company that's. All the other municipalities.
I know.
Everybody's gonna be jumping on board on this.
Same thing, if you think about running wires to the ceiling, I'm thinking we're about to adjust twenty-three traffic signals. I'm crazy if we waste money, if I have to put in two intersections and I'm working on the signals, why wouldn't I try to do it at the same time?
Right, right.
That's what I'm really, that's my long-term goal.
But.
I know, but.
Our hands are gonna be tied until Zappala figures out what he's going to do with. I guess all these other municipalities already purchased them and they own them.
They have the hardware, we'll have to now have the hardware and then.
Because of that, they don't wanna have to pay the additional costs.
Sure.
So he's supposed to be coming up with something.
Yeah, there's a chief, uh, Gagork, I think Whitehall, that's working on a list, uh, of her vendors. It's also in the wheelhouse of Mr. Wall, if any of you folks wanna talk to him, I think.
I think he wants to say something.
What? Let's, let's keep it short, not, not the undercutting job, we're, we're all over the place with.
Reading the Library of Congress here, Mr. President. Now that the, the district attorney's office has a specific platform, it's called OnVif. You can use any camera, as long as it's OnVif certified and it's specific to. Reading of licensed plates. There are a lot of cameras that follow that. Uh, that protocol, to Mr. Casey's point, there's a thing called the National Defense Acquisition Act. Which has specific cameras that cannot be used in any governmental. Implementation because they have a chip from China. Implementation because they have a chip from China. I would be happy to consult with the town at no cost. Because we are doing this with other municipalities in my work.
Thank you for that information. Um, are there any other questions for the technology committee? I gave you.
Well, you know what? You haven't because. They're kind of just frustrated too, because we've come to the meeting now, it's like hardly anything to talk about.
Yeah. I get it. And I know the backlog of boarding all this stuff, and that's why I just. You know, I wanna make sure we're, time is of the essence. Uh, if there's no further questions, uh, regarding the technology committee, we'll move on to the stormwater management ad hoc committee. Uh, the notes were in your packet. I can talk you off on any questions you'd like to ask.
Sure you could.
So, any questions for storm water? Okay, no questions in this time.
Just gonna ask, uh, Mr. Casey, did we ever find out Mr. Eichner was going to? He was gonna, was he checking with somebody else?
He's gonna have three people from the state there tomorrow at ten, if you'd like to come out.
I'd love to, okay.
And I just think. Are you going tomorrow?
I am. State asked for a limited amount of people.
The state did?
Yes.
Okay. Should I not show up?
No, you're.
Okay.
Okay. Pending no other questions, uh, then this time I'll ask, is there any public comment in the crowd as far as facilities management? Is there anything online? Then I yield this to Councilman Clooney.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Uh, this is the reports of the services committee and we will start with liaison reports. Uh, from the McCandless Township Sanitary Authority, Mr. Casey.
The report's in your packet. It was generally a reorganization meeting.
Thank you. And next is the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority. Um, reports are in your packet and as you're all I'm sure aware, we do have two vacancies from the town of McCandless that will need to be filled. Um, there is a February twenty third deadline for application for those vacancies. Um, we hope to have at least one individual in place before the end of the month and hopefully the other one very soon after. Now, are there any questions about the ambulance authority at this time? And none, we'll move on to the Northland Public Library Authority, Mr. Singer.
Uh, the notes were in your packet. Again, general reorganization meeting kickoff. If there's any questions, stay free to ask or to email them.
Thank you. And the uh, the gala is scheduled April.
Thank you, yes. During gala, we all received an email. I don't have it up in front of me. It is sometime here in April. By all means, check their website. It's a wonderful event. All. Members of council around, I highly recommend you attend. I'll be there as well, I'm a sponsor.
And um, do we have any public comment on the services committee? Nothing in the room? Anything online? Thank you. That concludes the service committee report.
April twenty seventh, April twenty second.
April twenty second, sorry. Okay, thank you, Mr. Singer, for your company sponsoring that. Um, okay, we have no old business and then new business. We have the paving list. And I think Jeff touched on it uh briefly. Uh, so really, this is just approval for you to take it out the bid.
Yes.
Does anyone up here have any questions or comments for? Nope. Okay. Uh, we need a motion for this. Okay. War is open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to a singer.
Prove the paving list as presented from public works.
A second.
Second, Mr. Casey. Uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, then uh, a meeting ago, it might have been two meetings ago, Mr. Casey asked us to look at our. Uh, uh ordinance that allows or did not allow uh employees of McCandless to serve in. Uh, a public office. So then, Mr. Casey got together a small committee. Our attorney added some language to the, uh, to the original, what would we call it, an ordinance?
Yes, it's an ordinance provision. There was an existing um provision in your town charter as well as a separate ordinance, which addresses political activities of employees. So there were some, some changes made to the ordinance provision.
Can you give us just the big picture? If for those who maybe didn't read, you know, have a wish of them.
So, um, essentially the the question arose as to, you know, can a existing town employee. Um, engage in political office in another municipality or even at a state level or or some sort of. Um, position that would have authority over the town. Um, the determination was that the the town council believed that that should not be prohibited, but. Should have some restrictions placed on it, a form of approval. So, um, previously, the code would have. Required that the employee um resigned from their position prior to taking office, the proposed changes. Would allow an employee to hold political office either in the town and a separate municipality or in a um. Statewide office or even up to federal if desired. Um, so long as they do provide um written, obtain written approval from the town manager. So require some form of notice and approval. Um, and it does then just define the transpublic office to make sure it encompasses. All of those various types of offices that one could hold.
So there's language proposed, so what we need to decide is, is this adequate, acceptable? Uh, is there anything that we wanna tweak? Cause the next step would be for our attorney to. It would be what advertised and then it would come up to vote.
Exactly. This would be a class C ordinance, so it would just require advertisement posting on the bulletin board and then it could come before you for approval.
So.
Did you say hold public office in this town?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you misstated. It's.
So.
You can't hold office in our town, but you can hold it in any other town.
Yeah, that's my apologies.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
And if, if you wanna take it a step further and be on a board or a commission, then you're required to get the permission of the town manager or town council.
Yes, so so you can, you would be able to hold at the point of commission. Um, you just would need that approval and.
I I go back to our previous meeting when this came up, um, when our solicitor at that time. Um, indicated that he had never heard of this in any other municipality that he worked in. It was kind of unique to McCandless. Um, so the ability, I think, is to, eh, from the recommendation of your committee, it sounds like, you know. We're still being very cautious. We have a fail safe with, you know, an approval process, but it also now opens it up. Eh, I for one. Would be for this. I think it makes good governing sense.
I I would say we did review when this came up and and it is fairly unique, particularly to have it in the charter. And yeah, the the language here is recommended by our office.
Okay. Mary Ann, you accept, relatively accepting of it, move to the next.
Sure. Yeah, I just did. I heard, I thought I heard her say in the town.
Yep, Ms. Clooney. Okay, okay. Well, let's uh get it ended.
Absolutely. So we will, we will prepare an advertisement and and get it for you at another meeting.
Thank you. Okay. All right. No new business? And then lastly, is there any general public comment from those? Sir, please come up, state your name and address. Thank you.
My last name is Nelson. Uh, my first name is Glenn. That's with two N's. Uh, I lived at two oh five eight Carriage Hill Road since nineteen seventy nine. Um, about a number of weeks back, I uh submitted an application to serve on one of the uh. Council's uh committees where citizens can be a member. Um. Unfortunately, shortly after I made my application, I received a correspondence from Mr. O'Malley telling me that, um. I'd missed the deadline, but that they kept my uh application to consideration the next time a position became available. But that's. Fine by me. Um, the uh, so I figured I'd take advantage of the interim and find out a little bit more about the committee. So. I went on the town website and tried to find, looked at what was available on the website. Basically, this is what I found. Since, um. January of uh twenty twenty one. Um. Eight agendas. Were put forth on the website. Okay. I found subsequently by searching through the data, that other meetings were held, but no agendas were ever posted. Now, I'm like, I don't know a lot about the sunshine law, but I guess it did raise a few questions in my mind.
Sir, if I can ask real quick, what committee are we speaking of about?
Uh, the personnel committee.
Thank you.
Um. It's a, eh eh, a little bit of looking on there, found out that in about fifty percent of the cases where there were agendas, there was no opportunity for anybody. From the citizens like myself to attend, was there was no Zoom site posted to do that. Um, in the world of minutes. Um. I found no minutes for twenty twenty two. I found one set of minutes for twenty twenty one. Now, I might be off on this a little bit, okay, because I didn't take. You know, perfect notes, but I did take some notes. There were some meetings that were held though, that were. There's no agendas ever posted. This is especially true in twenty twenty two. There were minutes because when you. But they were never post, they were never posted either. Then when I went on to council's minutes, I took, tried to take a look at council. At council's minutes to find out what I could find out. I found eight references in the council minutes that I looked at and in in most, in all but one of them and perhaps two of them. The committee had nothing to report. And that's what it said in the minutes. It said nothing, nothing. Personnel committee report, nothing. So. I I I'm, I I, I'm a little concerned about this. Um. I would hope that you might be a little bit concerned about it as well and that, um, that you looked into it. I called my council representative three weeks ago. Um. In the interim, we were never able to establish contact, which is why I came here this evening to. Present the information that I found to you and ask that perhaps you might investigate it and perhaps right uh respond back. At a uh meeting in the future and enlighten us. Who care, uh, as to what may or may not. Be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Uh, I'll grab your number and Brian and I'll grab your number after this.
Very good.
Uh, Mr. Malli and I'll grab your contact information after this to get back to you. But I can guarantee you that all the council minutes, so that that those are posted, what, twenty four, forty eight hour, the the there's various. The agenda and subsequent meeting minutes, they're they're strict uh posting requirements that I know we, I know we abide by.
Yeah, I don't think that was his question. But in our minutes, from what I'm hearing is, he saw the personnel committee said, nothing, nothing. Is that correct?
Yeah.
What I said was in in the, when I looked at your minutes, I couldn't find much reference to what.
Personnel committee.
The personnel committee was doing, because they, most of their reports said nothing.
Right.
But.
Gotcha. Okay, so we'll focus on the person.
Another thing, did you go, eh, you should have the video clips in there too, where you, you can go into YouTube and pull up. The me, the meetings are.
YouTube, I just looked on the top, I, it's like I said in my testimony, there were comments, I just looked on the town website. I didn't go.
It should, it should be on the town website. We'll get back with you the information, but I think you'll be able to pull up the meetings. The video of the meeting too. It's it's funny, it's, it's a, it's a quirky website.
Thank you for comments, Mr. Nelson. Is there any other general public comments? Anyone online?
No.
Yeah, okay. All right. Here none. Okay, now we're going to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and personnel matters. Thank you.